Good morning. It is Monday, August 22, 2022. The time is 7:32. Our meeting was to begin at 7:30. We're waiting on one or two other board members that are on the way with the torrential rainfall we've had. It's just the weather is really bad. So, we're going to take just a short recess until one or two of them get here and we'll begin the meeting again. It's 7:32 a.m. Okay, we will begin this meeting now. It's Monday, August 22, 2022. The time is 7:40 a.m. The special meeting of the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and notice of this meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. First item on the agenda is reports to the superintendent under business. It's an action item to adopt an order setting the ad valorem tax rate to fund the 2022-23 budget. Mr. Poppy?
As mentioned earlier, we have two. We have an agenda item today. The first one is adopt an order setting the ad valorem tax rate to fund the 22-23 budget. And then depending on what is approved on that item, then the second item would be to consider calling a Vator election. Before we begin, we have a brief, just a very brief presentation I wanted to walk through concerning the proposed tax rate. All right, as the administration, as we wrapped up the 21-22 school year and we began to develop or put together the budget for the 22-23 school year, we identified three areas that we felt we really wanted to focus our attention on. The first one being compensation for our district employees, particular our teacher's salary. The second being safety and security. And the third one being the expanded programs, expanded programs for the, for all of our students across MISD. In order to do some of these things, we, after reviewing our budget and looking at the potential to increase the revenue, the only opportunity we had was to have a voter approved, oh, sorry, voter approval tax ratification election. So, we looked at that. And House Bill 3 extended what House Bill 1 did in 2005, and it gave districts the opportunity to go to their taxpayers for some enrichment pennies, as they call them. There are three gold pennies that are still out there available that would require a voter, a Vator approval election. The district has been using five of these pennies before, which were allowed based on the Board of Trustees 100% unanimous adopting those rates in the prior years. However, there were three pennies that were available, and to get those three pennies, it would require an Vator election. Once we had that discussion and looked at what the opportunities were, we met with two committees. One was a committee made up of community members. The second was a committee made up with MEA, particularly with MISD teachers. We went through the process of what a Vator is, what it consists, and what it, what it would do for our district, and what we had anticipated doing with those additional funds. Both committees overwhelmingly approved and recommended that we, the administration, bring to the Board of Trustees to pursue a Vator. So, if you look at the MISD's tax rate history, since 2018-19, the district has gone, total tax rate, this is again, this includes MNO and INS, has gone down approximately just under 21 cents through this current year we just finished. The proposed rate that we're bringing, that we are bringing today to discuss and hopefully to be adopted, is a total tax rate of $1.2846. And that includes the three additional gold pennies, which would require a Vator election. This rate is, total rate is 2.74 cents lower than the rate, we, total rate we just finished in 20, with 21-22. If the Board approves this rate, and if the Board does approve calling a Vator election, if the Vator passes, our MNO and INS tax rate will be $1.2846. If the Vator does not pass, our tax rate then reverts down 3 cents and it goes to $1.2546. So, these three additional pennies, you know, explain why they're called gold. There's, there's a reason. Gold is a very high valuable element. So, these pennies generate $3.7 million from our local taxpayers. But the part where the gold turns in is they generate $12.7 million in additional state funding for a total increase of $16.4 million every year. So, if you look at, what does this mean for our, you know, an average homeowner? We've developed a couple scenarios here. If you are a, you know, $200,000 home, this 3 cent, and this is a total 3 cent. I mean, you remember, the MNO actually went down a little bit, but the total is as if it was a strict, strictly a 3 cent increase. It's $48 for a $200,000 home. Then as each home value goes up $100,000, the, the, the cost will go up $30. So, for a $300,000 home, the cost goes from 78, 48 to 78. A $400,000 home goes from 78 up to $108. A $500,000 home is a total of $138. In addition, for those 3 cents, that's what the cost to our, to our, to our taxpayers would be. But remember, the key is, it's basically a $3 match from the state. If approved today, and the voter, Vator election is called, Laura is going to provide a brief, kind of a summary of what would the next steps be going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Poppy. As he mentioned, if you do approve this Vator election, we will begin our work tomorrow in terms of putting together materials and information for our community and our staff to understand all of the details of what this means for them and for our community and for our district. So, we will get started on that, and you can see kind of the timeline that we will work with. We will begin communicating information pretty aggressively the week of September 12.
All right, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation. Are there any questions or comments concerning the?
Pete, you talked about, we had, one of your slides talked about 21 cents reduction since 2018-19, but with this, it'll be 23.54 cents if this all goes through the election, correct?
Yeah, we're just under 21 cents, and then it will go down an additional 2.74.
Okay.
That is correct.
So, for the benefit of our, those who are listening in, and as we go out, and Laura does her great work on this, the state's funding system says if a local district will raise their tax rate an additional 3 cents, which would give us about $3.7 million additional from our local people, they will kick in almost $13 million from now on going forward. That's what makes this so attractive, and then that gives us some money that we would not have to raise salaries, to do some additional work in safety and security, and then expand our programs.
That's correct.
It's a crazy way to do business, but that's what the state is, has available for us. But even with that, our net tax rate is going to be lower than it was last year.
That is correct.
Okay.
2.74 cents lower.
If that's the point I wanted to make, that it's gone down 2.74 cents, even with the increase in MNO.
Yeah.
Because of the other side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? This is an action item.
Mr. President, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 1.2846 cents. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 11.49% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $132.35.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mr. Bingham. Is there any discussion?
I want to, and Laura will bear this out over the campaign as well. When our voters go to the polls, the wording on the ballot will be very similar to what Mr. Carbo just read. And while it is accurate, it does not really depict the full picture.
That is correct.
Because our tax rate is going down, and the effect on our homeowners is not quite as dramatic as what is in the language that the state requires us to have. So, our voters are going to have to be well-educated that this is voting for schools, for teachers, for safety, and, but Laura will do a great job on that. But this is our first opportunity to have that message sent out today.
Yes, on the bond language, ballot language, it strictly is, as we talked about earlier, you know, we have two rates. You have an MNO and an INS. Well, the ballot language strictly talks of the MNO tax rate, doesn't take into account anything that does on the INS. For us, our INS is going down 4 cents, but that's not in the ballot language. It strictly looks at MNO rate and compares it to the prior year MNO rate. And so, it, it gives a certain message, but doesn't, or picture, it doesn't give you the full, complete picture.
Our voters will respond well with that. We'll, we'll help them understand.
And that's our, that's our goal.
For clarification, this, this particular vote here is to set the ad valorem tax rate. We'll be looking at the Vator in just, just a minute.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. I would point out that Mr. Rose, who is a professional firefighter and arson investigator, had a fire this morning. A house under construction was apparently struck by lightning. That's the reason that it is not here. So, next item on the agenda under business is to approve matters pertaining to the voter approval tax rate election on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. Mr. Poppy?
Yes, as previously mentioned, since you, we, since the Board has just adopted the tax rate, included the three additional pennies by law, the district would need to call for, to hold a voter approval tax rate election in order to, to access those three pennies. And so, that is the agenda item this, this morning. Sorry, I keep wanting to say this evening.
So, now we're asking.
So, move.
Second.
Yeah, the, the purpose of this, again, I had some notes, is to receive approval from the voters of this community, to set the tax rate to maximize state funding. Recent changes in House Bill 3 in the legislature require that school districts decrease their local tax rate once they reach a certain level of property value growth. And that's what we've been discussing. There have been, since TREs have gone into effect here in Texas, there have been over 600 school districts that have passed a TRE or a voter approval TRE, and so that's what this particular motion is for.
Yeah, if you look at the way the school funding system works, is basically it rewards local communities for additional tax effort. And that's the 3.7 million and the 12.7. If a district or community is willing to pay a little higher tax rate, the state then awards you with those gold enrichment pennies. And there's gold and copper, but we're focused on the copper pennies, those three additional, sorry, gold pennies. So, if our taxpayers, you know, approve this election, then the state rewards you, if you will, or by, by giving you those additional funds. And again, for us, it's $3 for every $1 that we, that our taxpayers collect, or pay.
Mr. President, I had some notes too. Some of those will be repetitive, but I wanted to make sure we covered, as Mr. Bingham said, we need to make sure we get the message out. You know, one of our roles as board members is to maximize opportunities for our school children in Texas and Mesquite ISD. This is one way to do it, and Mr. Everett talked about the TREs that have been done in the past. Well, at that point in time, some of those districts did 17 cent increases. We've never gone out, because we've always been very cautious of our district, our taxpayers, but taking care of our kiddos. This is allowing us to use what they call golden pennies. We're not getting all the golden pennies, we're just asking for 3 cents to make sure that we capitalize and maximize what we're doing. Some of the notes I've had here is that, to me, this tax rate election will generate revenue for Mesquite ISD to, one, be competitive and provide teachers and staff with additional compensation. It will allow the district to continue offering quality and expanded academic programs for our students. It will help us maintain positions and systems for safety, security, and the well-being of our students. And above all, it will maximize the maintenance and operation funding from the state. It would also allow the district to use these funds for books, classroom supplies, utilities, education resources, custodial insurance, and items that help educate students each day. And it will offset the loss of federal funding that we will see coming up pretty soon. And one other, it will also offset the budget deficits that we've had in the last several years. In addition to what I just mentioned, the total tax rate will decrease by 2.74 cents. The state allows the increase in local revenue of 3.7 million to stay in the district while generating additional state funding of 12.7 million, or what I call a 3.5 to 1 ratio of additional state funding for Mesquite ISD by accessing these three golden pennies. So, I just want our citizens to know that we are still decreasing our tax rate. And since 2018-2019, with this voter-approved TRE, we will have decreased over the last four years, our tax rate 23.54 cents, and in the last two years, 16.18 cents for our citizens.
Yeah, we've had a lot of bond referendums in Mesquite. This is not a bond referendum, but it will be a referendum, and it will be our responsibility to convey all this information to our voters, to get the word out, and, and we anticipate that, you know, our voters will do the right thing from standpoint of our students. We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mrs. Whitlock to approve the matters pertaining to the voter approval tax rate election to be set on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item under personnel is an action item to approve memorandum of understanding for Teachers of Tomorrow.
Dr. Verrett, good morning. Board, good morning. Hope every, glad to see everyone made it safe to the district this morning. Mr. Rose has some success with that fire that he's dealing with. We are excited to bring you an opportunity that the district has to join in partnership with Teachers of Tomorrow, and that is a certification, nationwide certification agency that we actually already do business with. But this is an exciting opportunity because it would add to our strategies and our actions to fill our remaining open teacher spots, which, by the nodding of the heads, of course, we're all on the same page as far as the importance of, of that. So, a little bit about the potential partner. Teachers of Tomorrow is a national alternative certification provider. Like we, like the slide says, they've placed or certified over 70,000 teachers to date. They show a higher retention rate than the national average, the retention rate being once these teachers get certified, these interns get certified, that they remain in the classroom. Like, like we already pointed out, we have a current relationship with Mesquite ISD, and they are rolling out, they are piloting this year actually, district select partnerships. And so, we were very fortunate, Dr. Verrett and I, were very fortunate to meet with them, and we were one of the first three, if I understand, in the metroplex area districts that they're trying to partner with in this district select process. So, what does that mean if we enter into the district select program for them? So, the comprehensive partnership would include, probably the first bullet point, the one that's most relevant, is assist in filling 30 teacher vacancies, 30 teacher roles right now. The teachers would receive certification and a dedicated advisor. The advisor's important because they would, much like when we attended college, you had a college advisor that would advise you on the appropriate steps to take towards graduation. Well, there's several steps that have to take place towards full teacher certification. And so, they'd have a dedicated advisor. Two-year access to tech, test preparation, because of course, to be certified in the state of Texas, you have to pass several tests depending on the nature of the position you're going to fill. You have access to office hours with the field supervisor and your advisor. And that's important because once these people are placed, that sound, that can sound kind of trite, well, office hours, just again, like in the college experience, they had office hours. But remember, these people are teaching kids all day. And so, right now, outside of this partnership, they certainly have access to their advisor and their field supervisor, but it's more generic into a call center, and there's not a dedicated time, perhaps, like they would have if we entered into this partnership, where I'm imagining after school, I've got a question for my advisor on the next steps towards certification, or my field supervisor. The field supervisor is that person that comes in and observes me in class and gives me feedback. The field supervisor also provides feedback to the campus administrator on the performance of these interns, if you will. They would also assist with marketing assistance. And so, what that means is, as one of the three districts in the metroplex so far that's a part of this program, instead of interns in this organization, Teachers of Tomorrow, just having generic kind of blitz of information of, here's all the openings in Garland, here's all the openings in Wiley, you know, all those different kind of things, we would have a much more precise and defined marketing program where the interns would get emails, texts, calls, those types of things, specific to our hiring events and specific to our vacant positions. And so, we can all see why that would be important and beneficial to us. They would receive nine field supervisor visits over three years, which is typically more than, than what they would, they would get now. I believe right now that we get five, so we, we almost double that. And then candidate teacher visibility with quarterly reporting. We would, as a member of this program, would receive quarterly reporting on all of these potential 30 teachers on their progress towards certification. Have they tested? How many modules, study modules have they done towards testing, those types of things? Again, that's valuable information because we want to partner and make sure that we're supporting these folks, because not only do we want them to fill vacancies that we have right now, we want them to stay in the district. Not only the recruitment, but the retention. And then a dedicated support team for the district and the candidate. We've talked about how the candidate, for instance, with access to office hours as an example of some extended supports through this program they would receive. As far as the district, we, I've already been in contact with our dedicated representative several times in the last week since we met. And so, again, in, in, as an example, instead of calling into a generic call center and saying, hi, I'm Mike Hasso, I'm with Mesquite ISD, hold on, let me route you to somebody, we've got a direct line of contact with somebody that services our account and is familiar with our vacancies. So, with that being said, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have at this time.
I have a question. We have kids graduating from that Ready, Set, Teach program, early graduating and all that. Are they qualified to go through this program?
Well, these are degreed individuals who have obviously decided that they want to be a teacher. And so, the first step is that they have to have a college degree, then they have to apply into an alternative certification, certification program. In this case, we're talking about Teachers of Tomorrow. And so, ultimately, yes, our Ready, Set, Teach kids can participate in this, but the primary difference is these are degreed individuals already. They hold a college degree.
So, and, and I'm guessing, of course, Ready, Set, Teach is a program that they come here after they graduate, so that's why I was asking that. You say you have 30. Is this every year, we're going to try to choose 30 people to run through the program?
Well, this is for the 22-23 school year. This is the commitment. Again, this is a pilot that Teachers of Tomorrow is doing. If I remember right, Dr. Verrett, you can correct me, it would be, so far in the metroplex, it's Lewisville ISD, Arlington ISD, and we would be the third entity to enter, enter into this pilot program.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Carbo, the difference between the kids that graduate Ready, Set, Teach from Mesquite, they supposed to leave Mesquite ISD and enroll in an educator program at a university. Once they graduate, they come back. Because they're coming from a university program, they're already credentialed. These are people that are not traditional educators, that have pursued a degree in something else.
Like business people.
And now want to become educators, so we put them through the educator portion of that, which Teachers for Tomorrow is in charge of.
Well, I think this is another great opportunity to reach out into the community and the state to find additional people that want to be educators, to help fill the roles that we needed in Mesquite. So, I like the multi-pronged approach that we're doing, different things, the Ready, Set, Teach, the pair deal we're doing with Texas A&amp;M and the Teachers of Tomorrow. This would be great.
Yeah, we were pretty excited when we, we got this opportunity. We, we just felt like we had to take advantage of it.
I, I just want to mention, I've gotten a call with a lot of superintendents. This is, we, we have a multi-pronged approach to this, and it's still not enough. It's still not enough. And, and that's the same sentence that I'm hearing across the state when I talk to other superintendents. Everybody's in the same boat, rowing together, but the workforce for teachers, the educated workforce is just, has just been replenished. And, and so, we're going to continue to find innovative ways and different partners that would help us get qualified educators in front of our kids.
I think it's a great program. That's how I got into teaching, through my alternative certification. So, I think it's a beautiful way, if you're ready to switch roles and you want to contribute that way.
You want a job?
We could, we could place you today, Ms. Collier.
It would have to be a.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Ms. Collier. Mike, would you convey again, how does this work regarding the improvement and retention of teachers?
Well, starting with recruitment, obviously, the commitment by Teachers of Tomorrow to supply us with 30 candidates for our remaining positions, that's, that's paramount in, in our interest in it. But then when you break it down with this program that we're going to be in, the district select program, the levels of support that are offered to these individuals, the potential 30 that we're going to take on through the course of the 22-23 school year, really merits a lot of attention on our part, because we've got in-house supports from professional learning and teaching, teaching and learning and all of these various components. But we know how difficult that first year, especially a transition first year, when you're not a traditionally prepared education major like I was. These are people coming in that have taken the challenge to be educators, and we couldn't be happier about that. So, we want to not only get them into Mesquite ISD, but we want to give them the supports where they will be in Mesquite ISD for several, several years.
I like the part where they support them for three years. I saw that, I like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Because traditionally, you don't get that support, along with MISD support. We have great program for beginning teachers here in Mesquite, so.
Yeah.
That's huge support.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a great point, Ms. Whitlock. I happen to have stopped into the second-year teacher gathering last weekend here, as a matter of fact.
It's wonderful.
And, and so, yes, ma'am, the supports that we have for those folks really do a great job of retaining those people and keeping them in the system. But as they debrief, this was their first time since the beginning of school, and they debriefed a little bit, the difference between year one and the difference between year two is, well, first of all, this type of support that I have, and secondly, as opposed to year one, I'm not blazing a new trail every day. I've at least got some experience to draw from when things go awry, because, you know, we can have the greatest lesson plans in the world, and we can have all of these different kind of things, but the human element is what it is. And so, that's also, that's, that's.
And we don't, you know, and we don't want to leave out that you have a mentor teacher at your school.
Correct.
So, you get three tiers of support.
Right.
I think that's, that's very good.
Yeah, so you're spot on with your point. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, you know, I like the fact that we're in this thing, and I know it's an investment we're making as a district. But I also like the fact that there's a contingency based on this. If they don't provide, we don't pay, basically.
Yes, yes. We, we built in some supports, and they, they were, they were very willing to accept our revise, revision, suggested revisions to the contract or the MOU. And basically, it stipulates that for every one less than 30, then we obviously wouldn't pay for those that, that were lower than, so, great point.
Good.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
For the 30 that were people that were asking to come, do we get to meet them before they're selected, or do you, how does that process work?
Oh, yes, ma'am. What they do is they provide us lists of their people who are potential interns, classroom interns, who are ready to take over classes. And then obviously, we have to match that with the certification or the subject area need. They would still go through the full interview process from the campus, and all of that is still in place. It's just a lot more tailored because of the marketing for, here's a list for you, Mesquite ISD, as opposed to, here's just a list.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda under personnel is an action item to approve the adjustment to the compensation for degreed permanent substitutes and degreed extended substitutes. Mr. Hasso?
Yes, sir. So we just talked about retention and recruitment, or actually, I've got those backward, recruitment and retention. And so this is another step that we're trying to take to bolster our multi-pronged approaches that Dr. Rivera talked about. So we appreciate the board giving us just a little bit of time to discuss this with you. So you can see in the, on the screen in front of you, we're referring to two specific types of substitute teacher categories. Permanent substitute teachers, which you see by the bullet points, these are degreed individuals, they're already in an alt cert program or alternative certification program. And they, these individuals, as we currently stand, are contracted salary, and they have been eligible for benefits since their effective hire date. The extended substitute teachers are also degreed, they're in an alternate certification program, but they're not as far in that program as the permanent subs. So the permanent subs, for instance, have passed the content area that they're working in. Now, I think it's important to understand, these people have supports in place with a field supervisor, a mentor teacher, first-year teacher academy, all of the things that we were just discussing. The extended substitute teachers, however, are non-contracted, they work on a daily rate currently, and they have not been eligible for benefits. And so Dr. Rivera made a good point as he's talking to his peers, fellow superintendents around the area, the DFW area. I've been doing the same thing with HR administrators as well. And so we're all, you know, the neat thing is that it seems to be a brotherhood where this, and we're all in this together, we're all searching for every way to find teachers. But there's also a competitive end to it, in that we all want to find teachers for our district. And so if we factor that in, one of the things that we want you to consider today is an adjustment to the compensation for these two specific class of substitutes. So the permanent sub, as you see in front of you, that's the top row, they currently earn $180 a day, which comes out to $33,600, which is state minimum for teacher salaries. That's a little hard to comprehend in the DFW area, but across the state, this is what the minimum standard is. And you see this a lot, perhaps, in more rural communities and those types of things. So what we are proposing is that we move permanent subs to full year, first, full first-year teacher salary, which is $57,400. These individuals would remain eligible for benefits. The extended subs, if you remember, these are not currently contracted individuals, they work on a daily rate. So their current daily rate is $150 per day. We are proposing that we also move them to $57,400, our first-year teacher salary. That would make them benefits-eligible. So as we think about that, not only are we enticing these individuals to stay in their current role, these are individuals that are currently in the classroom, filling vacancies, number one. Not only are we increasing their compensation to make it more palatable for them to stay, but in the case of extended subs, benefits now is something that's available to them. And I think we can all agree the importance of that. Again, the point was made that these individuals are filling current vacancies right now, and so they're doing all the work that a teacher does. They have full sections, they have conference periods where they meet in PLC, they do all of the other things that any garden variety, so in other words, if we walked into a campus, you couldn't eyeball someone saying, well, that's a permanent sub, that's an extended sub, and here's the teachers. They're fulfilling basically all of the roles with some minor exceptions, just because of some things legally that we can and can't allow them to do.
Mr. Hasso?
Yes.
How many do we have currently?
Yeah, that's a great question.
How many permanent subs and how many extended subs?
We have permanent subs, we have 19, and we have 67 extended subs currently. So we see the, by the number, how important these people are to our strategy to fill our current vacancies. And they're, by all accounts, they're working like demons and doing everything that we ask of them. And so we feel, not only is it merited because of the duties that they fulfill, but again, in keeping us competitive with our surrounding districts, we feel like this is the next step that we need to take. And especially for extended subs, they're moving to a contract status where benefits becomes a reality for them. That's huge for any of us, I'm sure.
What?
Yes.
Why wouldn't you, if they've already passed the cert and they are degreed, why wouldn't they move to, why, to a teacher role? Why would they stay as a sub?
Education degree.
But that, he's saying they've got that permanent sub role, they've already got a certification, a degree in some, they've got a degree, they've passed, is it, they're teaching out of their content degree? Is that what's happened?
Well, not necessarily. So as they come into the alternative certification program, any program's going to have an advisor. Remember, in the previous presentation, we talked about the importance of the advisor, advising you towards full teacher certification in the area that you've chosen to teach in. For instance, I was English. And so the permanent sub has passed their content area, but there's other tests that are required for full teacher certification.
Okay.
Okay? And so while they've made progress towards that, they're not fully certified yet. Does that answer your question?
It does, they're in between. Okay.
So the numbers on this slide, have they been changed since this was put out?
Yes, sir. We spent quite a bit of time putting together this proposal. And as things stay, as you look at this slide right here, you can tell the current salary, for instance, permanent subs was $180 per day, or state minimum, $33.6. Extended subs were $150 per day. And so that was a strategy that Mesquite ISD and several districts around us had employed for years leading up to the current context. And the thought there was, experience told us that when we incentivize you moving through that alt cert program, take your tests, pass your tests, those types of things, and that's tied to increased compensation. That's proven successful. The context of filling vacancies for Mesquite ISD when we're in competition with everyone else, that's really caused us to look at everything that we're doing, all of our strategies. And so with that being said, we feel like this is the strategy, moving them both to $57,400 first-year teacher salary, is where we need to be to remain competitive with our area districts.
Mr. Yassel, they're going through this alternative certification to pass all their tests. Is there a timeline for them to complete that? And if they don't, what happens?
Yes, so we typically expect them to complete all certification requirements within the first year that they're employed. If for some reason they didn't, there's any number of reasons why they wouldn't. Unfortunately, sometimes we have interns that get placed in a position, and something happens to their health or the health of an immediate family member, and so they have to pull away, and so their attention to certification kind of wanes. Sometimes they just have to take the test a few times, because remember, these people are teaching all day, and they're not classically trained educators. And so in the case that they might have to test more than once, then we handle each one of those on a case-by-case basis. But the expectation is that you would complete full teacher certification by the end of your first year of employment.
I did want one more clarification. I think you and I have talked about this. This is different from our everyday subs that we bring in when teachers are out. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And so there's different, there's other types of subs. These are people who are in the classrooms right now, teaching their kids. They're referred to as the teacher by those students, referred to the teacher as the campus administrator, referred to the teacher by us. I think perhaps what you're referring to is maybe the daily sub, that if I catch a cold and I've got to be out today, I call in and someone comes and covers my classes for a single day. We have those individuals, this is not who we're talking about. We also have long-term subs that maternity leaves, for instance. That's something we might be familiar with, where someone's going to be out for a prescribed extended amount of time. Then we have those that are also available. That is not what we're talking about today. What we're talking about today are the two levels of subs that are currently covering vacancies, classroom teacher vacancies.
To just add on to that, you talked about some long-term subs where, like maternity leave and so forth, do they still get the same pay as the daily subs? Or is there some adjustment for doing a long-term substitute?
Yes, sir. And off the top of my head, I can tell you that the daily sub rate is $95 per day. Ninety-five. In Mesquite ISD, it's $95 per day. The long-term sub, I didn't look at that this morning, I want to say it's $110 per day. I could be off by about $10, yeah, yeah, it's $110 per day. But again, those are two different categories of subs.
So Mr. Hasso, just a quick question. The salaries that they're going to have are pretty much the salaries of first-year teachers. Do their salaries, are they going to stay the same through the years? Or is there going to be a difference between, because second-year teachers get a different salary, third-years teachers and all that. But the subs have perennially been the same salary all the time. So are they always going to be permanent subs and do, and get that $57,400?
Well, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the permanent subs, at this point, we'll put permanent subs and extended subs together because our recommendation is that they get first-year teacher salary. So assuming that they fulfill their obligation as far as full teacher certification, then they would fall in line with whatever raises that we give from here moving forward.
So...
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Correct. So there's still, you're correct. So there's still an incentive for them. The other thing is that they don't have their contract, a letter contract that they would sign stipulates that there's no expectation for continuing employment if they don't complete, if they don't complete their certification, so.
So are they going to be responsible for reports, grading, and all that, like a regular teacher?
Yes, sir.
That's very important, good. And I appreciate it, because I expressed some years ago that some subs have been coming forward and telling us that their system needs to be revamped, something had to be done, because they're being stolen from other districts that have done something different. And this is a very good program, and I think this is going to help us keep our subs.
Yeah, and it's important, remember, we talked about, this is important for recruitment and retention. So what we're talking about right now with the 19 perm and the 68 extended, we're really talking about retention, because these are people that have accepted the challenge to teach in Mesquite. Most of these people are very proud of Mesquite, people have some type of ties, of course, we know how, that, how important that is to our culture. And so we want them to stay here and not be enticed by someone under the current structure. Economics or finances are what they are. If I'm making $33.6, but I can drive 17 miles and make 50 whatever, I got to entertain that, as much as I love Mesquite. And so we think that this is a fair and just way to address retention. Additionally, we, I can tell you that there's been a handful in the last couple of weeks of candidates that the campus admins have brought in and have wanted to bring in on these roles, but they just couldn't afford it based on what we were paying. And so now, with $57,400 as the enticement, that might be a bigger enticement. Now, I do want to stipulate, if you look, there's an asterisk there, it says, if approved salary adjustments would be retroactive to the date of effective, their effective hire date, and it's prorated. And so prorated meaning that we would pay them however many days remaining on this school year, their daily rate for $57,400. So I think that's important for everyone to understand.
Mr. President.
Hey, Mr. Surr, before, one thing, to clarify your question, Mr. Carbo, once they get certified, in a TRS system, they'll go in, if they're certified year one, they become a tiered, two-year service teacher on year two with their certification. So they go up according to the paid schedule that we adopt as an organization. But the important thing, anybody that's listening or watching this recording, these positions were already budgeted, full teacher salary. So we're not really adding, because we had to fill them with permanent subs or extended subs, we're actually, we're paying less. But to Mr. Hasso's point about staying competitive with our neighbors, it would be disastrous for Mesquite ISD for these 81, 82 people to leave, to go for a higher salary. So we need them, we want to value them, and this is the way that we're proposing to do so.
Mr. President, I move to approve the adjustments to the compensation for degreed permanent substitutes and degreed extended substitutes.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Surr, a second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you to each of you for your time this morning, both board members and staff. Time is now 8:25 a.m. with no other business. On the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.